Good evening. It's 5:30. I'm Max Bacon. I want to welcome everyone here tonight to the Mayor's Educational Award. This is our 10th year that we've done this. And it makes me happy when we do this. We recognize those that are the best of the best. Special people, whether you're a student, or a volunteer, or a teacher. The way that it works is we don't pick the folks. The principal does so. Sort of like judging a beauty contest. Everybody starts yelling at you when their daughter doesn't win. So we're just glad that y'all are here. To me, education is still number one issue in this community. Our schools are great. We've got great public schools. I'm glad to be here. I've got some elected officials that are here too. Ron Fennel, Reverend 47, Derrick Norton, and Corky Weppe. Derrick's from Award One, Corky's from Four. And there'll be some other ones coming in. I want to thank some folks, the staff, that put this together. Raise your hand if you put this together. You have no idea. This is the brain right here. She does anything. I want to thank Chick-fil-A, Jim &amp; Nick's, Mac and I Bakery in Zaxby's. They have helped out with some of the things we're going to give away. It's a big crowd here tonight. I know Chris Ragsdale's here. Chris, who else is here? Give him a big hand. He's a big guy. Big guy. Plays the piano. You ought to see his piano shoes. He is a good piano player. We're going to start tonight. We're going to do something a little different. Hey, Chris, you want to say something first? You're going to slap me for telling him. The city has got a great relationship with the school board and the school system and with all our schools. So, good to see you. Sorry about the rain and the hot weather.
Well, I wish you could do better about it. So, first of all, thanks to the mayor and city council for putting this on. This is something unique that you guys do. And it recognizes, obviously, our mission of one team, one goal, student success. It takes all the members... Are you recording me? Televised? Okay. So it takes all the members of our team. But I think one thing that you can say, and all the employees here can attest to that, you'd be hard-pressed to find any of our employees that don't know our mission. Because it's not just words. It's something that we live by. And we truly believe that it takes the entire team. And it takes the entire team to make us all successful. So when you have an event like this, it's easy to see when you have a star teacher, have a star volunteer, and a star student. Takes the entire team to have success. But when one member of our team succeeds, the entire district succeeds. So, thank you guys for the obvious participation that you have. And thank you guys for putting it on because it's something unique that Smyrna does that I don't think any other city does. Or I don't go to any others except here. So, appreciate it.
I'm going to do something a little different. Big tall guy. I'm going to start with Campbell High School tonight. Is Dr. Walker here? You better be here because I'm starting when you let you go first. Campbell High School. Fifty years ago. This year, I graduated from high school. Long time ago. I was 31. I was not. I was 17. Dr. Walkers. Then I'm going to let my sister go next.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here tonight and recognize our recipients of the Mayor's Award. First off, I'd like to recognize our student recipient Clara Grimalda. There's Clara. Come on down Clara. Come on down. Got to come up front. Clara is an incredible student, and we are so blessed to have her at Campbell. She is a senior with a 4.083 GPA. One of our IB students. But I think what we all respect and admire about Clara is her big heart and how much she gives back to those around her. She didn't even want to be here tonight. She doesn't like to be in front of people. It's not about recognition for her. It's about what she can do to help others. She is part of our JROTC Leadership Program. And a bunch of her peers are here to support her. She's President for Peer Mediation. She's a member of the Principal Student Advisory Board. President of HOPE, which is the Hispanic organization promoting education. She coordinated our freshman orientation and some of the transition programs we did this year for our freshmen as they moved into high school. And she mentors at the middle schools. Clara is just a shining star at Campbell High School. And we are so proud and wish we could just keep her forever and ever. But please congratulate her for all she does. At this time, I'd like to recognize our staff member who's a recipient, Mr. Andy Smith. There he is. Mr. Smith is our English Department Chair. I forgot to ask how many years you've been a teacher and an employee of Cobb County Schools.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three years. He is not only a great leader at our school, he is a wonderful teacher. Mr. Smith has assisted us with several professional development programs at the school, including data team process, professional learning communities. All my education principals will know all these buzzwords. And also mentored our new teachers in classroom management, just to name a few things he's done already this year. He, as I said, is a fantastic teacher. And every time I go in his classroom, I just want to get back into learning about literature and analyzing and all of those great things that go with language arts classes. He does things like "Good Morning with Mr. Smith", where he ad-libs a morning talk show with his students. And it's really a lot of fun. But a great teacher, a great asset to Campbell High School, a great asset to Cobb County Schools. Thank you, Andy. Then finally, but certainly not least, I would like to recognize our parent volunteer, Ms. Melinda Owensby. Ms. Owensby volunteers in so many ways. She was last year's Martin Luther King Humanitarian Award recipient at Campbell High School. She never says no. She volunteers in our counseling department assisting with new student enrollment at the beginning of the year when we have hundreds enrolling at one time. She assists with... volunteers during our Power Hour. She also volunteers incessantly with JROTC. Catherine Burns, First Sergeant Burns, Cobb County's Teacher of the Year for the whole county last year, said she's never had a parent in her 19 years that has helped out as much as Ms. Owensby. Here's just one tidbit. She feeds the cadets, the drill team, every time they have a meet. That's 35 to 40 students. She provides the food. She brings the food, provides the food, and makes sure they have something great to eat. And does this multiple of times. Sergeant Burns said one time she raced by on her way to a funeral just to drop off the food to make sure that the kids got fed. So, I thought the funniest story I heard was talking to her last week at a basketball game. She shared that her family was considering going to Gatlinburg for the holidays. And her husband is afraid that she won't be able to stop her charitable ways and won't want to go out and help all of those poor families that have lost their homes. So, they're having to really think about that decision for their trip. But we are so blessed to have Ms. Owensby. She's a great example of Campbell Spartans. So, thank you for all you do.
We actually got a photographer here tonight. Hold on. I mean, a real photographer. So they're going to take pictures of everybody?
You want to get in the middle and that'll get around you?
Whatever you want to do.
Stand right there and get all of them. You're in the middle now.
This is harder than this. Your husband's right back there, wasn't he? Hey, come on. All right, that's good. I hope it. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Linda Kinney, King Springs. I'm going to let you go. And that's her Christmas gift to her. My sister's... Very proud of my sister. Let me out of a trunk when I was in the sixth grade. That time you locked me in the trunk and told me I went to Santa Claus. Linda Kinney, King Springs.
Let me call up the King Springs recipient, Robert Brown, Melissa Gottschalk, and Remy Bayston.
I'll start with Ms. Remy. Y'all got the memo. I'll start with Ms. Remy. She came to us. She was blessed with... Leslie Mansfield was blessed with her kindergarten through second. And she came to us in third grade. And you weren't too sure about us at first, were you? She wasn't happy some days. And I worried about her, and I talked to her mom about that. But by fourth grade, she had settled in. She is an unbelievable, high-achieving youngster. Her academics are unbelievable, and her teacher says you always go above and beyond. So now, as she's settled in, she's a KSE anchor right now, a news anchor. And she is Secretary of the Beta Club. She participates in the annual... the Yearbook Club, and she's a melody maker. But most importantly, she now makes it a point to welcome new students to King Springs because she remembers what that was like. So you're going to stay with you and not go back to Miss Mansfield, are you? Remy Bayston. And this little thing that's standing by me is a ball of fire. She teaches fourth grade, and she came to us in 2013. I think that's right. And she's teaching fourth grade. She is the coach for our Science Olympiad team. And we went to state. We earned state recognition. But first year we were out with Science Olympiad. She is currently teaching something that we're doing new in elementary, which is advanced content. And it's like unbelievable. When I observed her the other day, I went in and I thought, I don't think I could pass that class. It was so hard. So she's always willing to do whatever it takes. She's our fourth grade team leader. And Melissa Gottschalk, we're so glad you're with us. From Muscle Shoals. This handsome gentleman is my buddy. And he first brought his three beautiful children to us. And then we got him active in the school along with his wife. Sorry. Come on, Robert. Anyway, Mr. Brown brought his three children to us. They are wonderful. But he and his wife are both wonderful, and this is his second year as our PTA president. And he has done unbelievable things. Every single year, we have increased PTA membership steadily since he has been President of our PTA. And we're just doing great things, and I don't know what I'd do without him. He's my buddy.
Where'd Remy go?
Put that microphone in front of your phone.
Just so you know, Zaxby's and Jim &amp; Nick's, there's a coupon or a $50 gift certificate or something in there along with a certificate and a little award that says Mayor's Award. Back to alphabetical order. Argyle Elementary. Robert Babay. Where's Robert at? Saw him earlier.
Good evening. I'm proud to recognize the following recipients of the Fall Semester Mayor's Awards from Argyle Elementary. First, student Alex Cruz. Alex is a fifth-grade student described by his teacher, Ms. Sergeant, as motivated, polite, confident, and incredibly generous. He takes a leadership role in his classroom by patiently helping others while consistently maintaining superior grades of his own. Previous teachers have described Alex in virtually the same way. Helpful to others, hard-working, and always having a positive attitude. In his free time, Alex enjoys participating in Cub Scouts as well as playing outside with his three brothers and one sister. He hopes to one day pursue a career as a veterinarian. Congratulations, Alex Cruz. Next, I'm very proud to recognize Argyle's 2017 Teacher of the Year, second-grade teacher, Ms. Rosalyn Burton. Professional, kind, hard-working, and committed. These are just a few words that describe Ms. Burton. Rosalyn exemplifies a commitment to the education of children. The message she consistently communicates to her students is loud and clear, that a quality education is priceless. She sets high expectations for her students and holds them accountable for meeting those expectations. Every minute of every school day is focused on providing each of her students with quality lessons that enrich their learning. Ms. Burton truly cares about each and every one of her students and holds herself accountable for their academic success. She has a passion for teaching, and the last 11 years has been making a difference in the lives of her students. Rosalyn Burton. Finally, I'd like to acknowledge Argyle's favorite substitute teacher and education partner, Ms. Ann Dominguez. Ann exemplifies what it means to be a team player as a substitute teacher. You have to be flexible in each morning. Ann is one of the first teachers in the building smiling, ready to accept any position assigned to her. Whether she's working in a general education, specials, or exceptional education setting, she makes learning fun. Second-grade teacher Stephanie Loren states, "If you're lucky enough to have Ms. Dominguez teach your class, you can count on returning the next day with all of the work you left, not only completed, but many times graded." Ann goes above and beyond what is expected to make sure each student gets a quality education. We are grateful and blessed each day she chooses to work at Argyle. Congratulations.
That's it. I'm not doing anymore. The right to focus on me is we're going to be your one.
Well, good evening, everyone. We have a lot of exciting things going on at the Hills. We were recently recognized for having the highest achievement gains in attendance in the state of Georgia. We were second. And the only Cobb County school to be recognized for that. Also, we were recently awarded STEM certification for Cobb County. First Smyrna school to receive that. So we're excited about that. I say this to say that these folks that you see up here have a lot to do with those accolades. I'm going to start off with this young gentleman right here who's looking very spiffy tonight. When we decide who's going to receive these awards, our leadership team is the one who decides. And for the student award, we usually give this award to one of our fifth graders who has been with us. And when we made this decision this time around, it was unanimous that this young gentleman was to receive this award. And he's in fourth grade, and so we're so very proud of him. King Cam is our student recipient here at Belmont Hills Elementary School. And he's been with us since kindergarten. Throughout his time here, he's shown dedication to his academics as well as being a leader in our school and our community. In the classroom, he's thoughtful. He's an active participant. He works well with others and consistently is a role model for other students. He's caring and he's motivated. He's a part of our Target program. But his achievements go beyond the classroom as well. He's a part of our Science Olympiad team, and he's also in our Engineering Club. So I'm very proud of this young gentleman, and you're going to see so much more from him in the future. So, King, congratulations. All right. So, this is Diane Brandon, and she is our media specialist. And we stole Ms. Brandon from Bullard Elementary. She was a first-grade teacher. And when I hired... when we were interviewing for this position, one of the questions that I asked her, we were in the process of our STEM certification, and I asked her, "How are you with technology? Do you know, how are you familiar with it? Do you feel confident?" And she looked at me, and she said, "If I don't know how to do it, I'll figure it out." So, come to find out, she really had never done any of that. However, however, she has been instrumental in our STEM program. We currently house six iPad carts, four laptop carts, and two Prometheum tables, and she oversees all of that on a daily basis, and that's huge. So, and we couldn't have done what we did without you. She's also responsible for beginning our news program in the mornings, which is now fully functioned by... and run by the kids. So she's taken on that. She purchased all the equipment. It's amazing what those kids can do. So, Ms. Brandon, we love you. We couldn't do what we do without you. And I'm really sad because she's retiring at the end of this year. So, I know. So thank God we're going to replace you. All right. Now we have this gentleman. He's my buddy. This is Mr. Nathan Morris. And Mr. Morris came this year, and he registered his children. And at Open House, he said, "I'm going to be back to help." And so many folks tell us that, and then we never see them again. But he was true to his word. And Mr. Morris, I'm just going to run down maybe some things that he does on a regular basis at school. He comes in, he helps with the breakfast with the kids. He gets the kids to class. He helps... He's on our PTA board, which he's a big part of that. If a teacher needs help out in the parking lot because she has a flat tire, he's there to help them. If we need to put up cones because we have too much traffic, Mr. Morris is there to do that. So he is there from morning to afternoon for dismissal at times, it seems. He comes in and out. My favorite... We always want those role models for our kids. And my favorite was our first... We have the dances for the kids. And we get ready for the dance, and they're like, "Ms. Nelson, you have to go out into the gym." I'm like, "Okay," so I go out there. And here is Mr. Morris, and he's... The kids are loving it. They're screaming and yelling. Mr. Morris is dressed as Batman. And so he's dancing with the kids, and they're just loving it. So, we love him at our school. We don't know what we would do without you. Thank you so much for everything that you do.
Green Acres Elementary. Angela White. Is she new? No, you're quick. This lady's quick. Watch this. Absolutely. Watch how quick this is going to be.
And usually I have to go quickly because normally King Springs comes behind me. Where's Miss Kinney? Fortunately, we're old friends, right? Come on down, ladies. I don't see Melissa. So Melissa Medina is our student representative. She's a fifth-grade student at Green Acres who we all, as teachers, would love to have in our class because she always tries her best. She's that student who shows up every day with a big smile on her face and works hard to do each and everything we ask of her. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll take that on behalf of Melissa. This is Ms. Sandra Choppa. She is co-president of our PTA. She is at Green Acres almost every single day. She's willing to do anything and everything to help us be successful. For our Fall Festival with a group of, what, five other ladies? She made over 900 tamales. And then turned around a week later and did the same thing for one of our partners in education, Green Acres Baptist Church. So, Mr. Mayor, she's awesome. Okay. So this is the one I have to do without crying, right? So, this is Ms. Bellini Teklu. She is our literacy academic coach. She is the epitome of a professional educator. Truly, truly a lifelong learner. Just this week, she earned a graduate degree. She got her specialist degree in curriculum instruction. She consistently models for students and for my teachers exactly what a dedicated educator should do. Her passion for children and her love of learning make her an asset to Green Acres, and I'm so glad she's part of our family.
Nikka Jack Elementary. Adam Hill. Maybe that's the new guy. He's a new guy. If y'all want to stand up, you can.
How are you, sir?
Good to see you.
Good evening. I'm going to call up... How are you, Claire? I have not spoken to Claire yet, so I'm going to say hey to Claire. I'm going to start by talking about Claire Obermeyer. First of all, I'm jealous of her last name because I just get Hill. And I just think that's boring, and names are so important. So I'm jealous of your last name. I like to tell you that first and foremost. But I do have something prepared here because if I don't, you're going to call me Linda Kinney. Claire, being new to Nikka Jack and to this event as well, I wasn't exactly sure what to expect or even who to nominate. So, I turned to my fifth-grade team of teachers and explained that I needed their help in nominating an outstanding student, but not just outstanding academically. Actually, and most importantly, I needed a student that was way more than academically successful or hard-working with school or scholarly assignments. I really wanted us to have somebody that represented Nikka Jack and that was more than just a high achiever. And I will tell you, Claire, that our fifth-grade teachers very quickly... Actually, it was immediately, I tell you, with multiple teachers, Claire Obermeyer's name was shared. And here's what I learned, and this is why Claire is being honored today. Claire is extremely respectful. She is such a responsible individual. She is definitely a role model. Claire is self-motivated. She is a natural leader. She always has a... She always has a take-charge attitude. She's certainly a go-getter that likes to problem-solve. What we love and admire the most about you, Claire, is that you want to be successful, and you advocate for yourself. Yeah, nod that head, that's right, be proud of that, be confident in that. Claire asks teachers, of course, in a respectful way, "Why are we doing this? How does this have an impact on me and my life? Or how is it gonna impact me later in life?" And that's so important for kids to have that connection, and she's doing that on her own. We need more students like that, right? I agree. In closing, Claire deserves to be honored tonight as she is, on top of everything else I've shared, such a thoughtful individual. If she sees a classmate struggling, she will, without asking, offer to help that student, but won't simply provide that student with an answer. She will instead work with the student and teach for understanding. I wish we were all a little bit more like Claire Obermeyer and had more Claire Obermyers in this world. Thank you for you, you're awesome. Next, I'd like to honor our Classified Employee of the Year at NicaJack, Ms. Teresa Williams. Y'all see that smile? I get that every morning. Teresa Williams has been a parent educator for many years at NicaJack, and she is currently working as a ray of sunshine in our Learning Commons. She is outstanding. Teresa has an incredible work ethic, she is a true professional. She always acts in the best interest of children and consistently works with teachers to ensure student success. Something I really love about Ms. Williams, she takes great pride in our school, our students, their parents, and she truly cares about each staff member as well. Over the years, Teresa Williams has volunteered for and served our Relay for Life team, several student clubs, including the Art Club, Chess, and the Environment Club. Ms. Williams has worked with our chorus and served as our building leader, or served as a building leader on NicaJack's school improvement team. Finally, Teresa is always happy and smiling. I've never seen anything else other than that right there. She has an inviting spirit, and she always speaks in a sweet and calming voice. She's willing to do anything for anyone, and most importantly, our students all love you. Teresa Williams is certainly deserving of this honor, and NicaJack is extremely lucky to have you. Thank you. Last but not least, I'd like to recognize one of our parents and parent volunteers, Ms. Stacy Levine. Said that right, right? I always wanna say Levine, you know that. This whole silent E thing throws me. No, it's okay, it's okay. Stacy Levine serves on our school Foundation's Board of Directors as our Back the Jack fundraising campaign director. That is quite a title right there. When I first began at NicaJack this summer, and I began meeting with our Foundation President, the President shared with me, the Foundation wanted to up their fundraising goal from $55,000, which is already a pretty lofty goal, to $72,000. And being the new guy, I was reluctant to share my worries and concerns, but of course, also loved the thought of having that much money to play with, right? Well, it didn't take long for those worries and concerns to go away. And the first Foundation meeting where I actually met Ms. Levine, I was no longer worried about raising that money. You see, I lost my place, see, this is why I write it down. Here we go, let me tell you about Stacy Levine. Driven, determined, extremely hardworking, a spitfire, hope that's okay if I say that, are just the beginnings of my first impressions of Stacy Levine. After meeting her, I knew NicaJack was definitely going to meet or surpass that monetary goal with her at our lead, because she wasn't going to take no for an answer from anybody. And running a fundraising campaign like this, especially leading up to, during, and just after the campaign, that's a full-time job. And this is volunteer work on top of Stacy's full-time job that actually pays her bills. This dedication to NicaJack is incredibly touching. And then, how can anyone forget that third job you have? That's so insanely important of being a mom to 2 wonderful 5th grade girls, twins, at NicaJack that have attended NicaJack since kindergarten. And Stacy has been involved since their beginning. She has worked book fairs, field days, and has become an integral part of our community. I don't know how you get it all done and done so well, but I know that I and all of NicaJack appreciate you and want to honor you tonight. Thank you.
He just thinks he wants to be like Lindakini. Norton Park Elementary. Jeffrey Moses, I saw Jeffrey somewhere. There's plenty of food out there, we're serving lobster after, for a dinner meal. Good to see you.
Alright, let's try it again. Norton Park Elementary. Alright, there we go, there we go, there we go. I have 3 amazing individuals with me, and I am super excited and honored to stand next to them. First is Christian. Christian, the first word I would say about Christian is that he's resilient. Christian has dealt with some, some minor health things that had him hospitalized. However, it never broke his spirit. He leads in school, he leads amongst his peers. He's received a prestigious Golden Eagle Award, as well as participates in a number of events. He's humble, he's a safety patrol, and he volunteers his time. Christian embodies what I feel like we should look for in every student. And so for Christian, congratulations, I'm proud of you. This one here, Ms. Barage. So Ms. Barage is our target teacher. And she has passion, she has heart, she has something that you want to see in your child's teacher every day. She embodies those things as well that make me say, you know, "How can I be a better leader to make sure that she's a better teacher?" And that's rare to find on a consistent basis, on a daily basis, every time you see her. And so with that, I say that I am honored, I am grateful, and I am thankful for all that you give to our students, how you support our staff and our community. Congratulations. Come on, Ms. Teasley. So, every morning, I am greeted with a smile. In the rain, she's smiling, she's dry, I'm wet, but she's smiling as we're unloading cars, and she walks our building every morning as she come in. And, and when she enters, no matter what's going on, no matter what you see, no matter who she comes in contact with, it's funny how they begin to smile. And with that, she gives of herself. She's always said, "I'm here to help, I can do whatever you need me to do." And that's something that, you know, it's, that's a heart thing, you know? And so I'm just honored to have her as a part of our family over at Norton Park and here in Cobb County. So thank you for all that you do.
Give Tammy a big hand.
I appreciate that. Alright, my 2 people, I just saw Hannah, come on up. She is about the shyest person in the world, but she loves me so much, she still came. My student could not be here, and his name is Fonte Dawson. And he's one of the students that make it worthwhile coming to Russell. He's one of my special needs students who started at Russell running out of the classroom to now in the classroom, sitting down eager to tell me what he's learning. So, it'd be my privilege to give that to Fonte tomorrow. Okay, my staff, Chris Lassiter, a man after my own heart. Chris is one of my tutors at the school. And I don't know if you know about Russell Elementary, but we're known for our space team. And where we actually assimilate space, I mean, the kids go through a notebook, a rigid program. I mean, we have doctors. If you've never been to Russell, you need to come in May when we do it. I mean, they lift off, they have the uniforms and everything. He works with these kids every day with no pay, from like 2:45 until 5 o'clock. He's also started a radio club, which I kinda talked him into, but he is doing a great job. And this is where the kids get to talk to different people in different countries, in different states, and they actually get to pass a test. It's like an amateur radio test, and they really have to study, and it is a very hard test. It is so hard to tell you that one of the parents of my student took the test and didn't pass. But the students are passing the test, and it is my impact on you. I know it, that's okay. If it had to happen to anybody, it could happen to me, I can take it. But Chris is a wonderful guy. In fact, he just told me, now that's a little too bright. He just told me that the Amateur Radio Club won a national award. So that information's gonna be coming out, we're gonna give it to Communications. But he is an outstanding man, and let me tell you how I know he loves me and Russell. He is here today, and it is his 29th anniversary today. So y'all give him a round of applause. You don't wanna go to Zaxby's, he's saying to take you to Zaxby's. Jim and Nick, after 29 years, you deserve a little bit more. I've taught him better, so you'll do better than that. Ms. Hannah, please come up. Ms. Hannah is my co-president. She is the quiet powerhouse of Russell Elementary. She is on my school council, she helps me with student council, she decorates all my walls, she feeds all the kids. She will do whatever I tell her to do. So if I had a poster that could say, "One team, one goal, student success", it will be her, because she has my back, and she loves those students just as much as I do. So Hannah, you definitely deserve this and much more, so thank you.
We, you know, traffic's bad, and they're building a stadium out there. We had some folks come in late on the council. I know Terry Nulwich is here, Doug Stoner. Susan Wilson, I thought I saw her somewhere. Who else? That's it. I saw Susan Thayer, I think, somewhere came. She was here, a good deal, we'll let her talk in just a second. Smyrna Elementary. James Ward is not here.
So, Mr. Ward couldn't be here this evening, he's sick, and he regrets that he can't be here. So it takes 2 of us to replace him. I'm Melissa Rohn, the Assistant Principal, this is Shawnee Ventura, our special, well, SSA.
Good evening. It's such a pleasure and an honor. We're gonna start with Gabby, Gabby Marinaro. I gotta put my glasses on, 'cause her teacher wrote something. Gabby's a young lady that finds value in every person. She is willing to take any amount of time necessary to help a classmate or any Smyrna student and teacher with whatever they may need. She is tremendous help with her bilingual skills and with a heart of gold that makes everyone feel important and special. You certainly deserve it.
Next, we would like to recognize Amber Henning. She's our Teacher of the Year this year. We interviewed Amber when we opened Smyrna, and we knew from the moment she started talking, we want her on our team because she's so passionate about helping kids meet their potential, and it's not okay with her if someone is struggling. She will make sure that they get what they need to build themselves up and to learn all the things that they need to learn. She has taught 3rd grade with us, ESOL, and then the last 2 years, last year and this year, she's been a 1st grade reading specialist. She's amazing, she gives 150% every single day. She's been a school leader since the moment she walked in the door, helping us with our Leader in Me initiative and getting that started from the ground up. And then this year, she's also been instrumental in getting a reading initiative going, a new one this year, a million-minute reading challenge. So we just, we love you, and we couldn't do it without you, Amber.
And this handsome gentleman is Nuri. I gotta look at it, Al Bolali.
I couldn't pronounce it.
He's like the heart of Smyrna. He's been there, he's there all the time. He volunteers, he's a dad, he does any kind of job that needs to be done. He comes to every single event that needs, that happens. He helps when the lights went out for the movie night, we were running around with extension cords. Nuri helps everybody and every student. He, his, his daughter goes there, but he also is a champion for every student. They, he's almost like their dad at school. And they miss you in the cafeteria. Thank you.
I look this way.
So if our recipients can come up, please. We only have 2 recipients to honor tonight because our staff member, who is Kayleen Brooks, she's our art teacher and our Teacher of the Year. I got a text from her at 5 after 11 on Friday night that said, "My water broke." So she has a brand-new baby girl, and she's amazing and wonderful, and everybody loves Ms. Brooks, right Bailey? Yes. So I'll start with this amazing girl standing right next to me. This is Bailey Smith, and Bailey is a 5th grader at Teasley. And she is represented well with her family and her teacher. And Bailey brings, she just packs a punch. She has amazing parents. Her dad teaches and coaches at Campbell High School and does so much to support Teasley, and her mom is always there. So I literally could have the whole family up here. She also has a precious 1st grade sister. But Bailey is amazing. Bailey is one of the most self-motivated children I have ever met in my life. And what her teacher says about her is that it's not enough for her parents or her teacher or anyone to push her. So much of what Bailey does comes from the inside. And Bailey understands the importance of things coming from the inside. She was the class representative at our author's tea, or author's breakfast, last week. And Bailey shared the most beautiful poem called "Sprout", and "Sprout" was all about beauty coming from the inside, and it was wonderful. I wish I had a copy to read to you, 'cause it was just special. Bailey does everything. She's part of our Treble Tones chorus, she was in Honors chorus, she's on the Robotics team. What am I missing? Softball, yes, and, and she's the president of the student body. So, needless to say, everyone loves Bailey, and it doesn't matter if you're a kid, it doesn't matter if you're a parent, it doesn't matter if you're a staff member. Bailey is amazing, and we'd like to clone you and have about 100 of you running around our school. So, thank you for being amazing, Bailey, we love you. And next, this is Susan Wintker. So Susan is also amazing, she's our parent volunteer. And she, her primary role is mom of a beautiful third grader named Ally and a first grader named Ryan who are in the back. And Susan stepped in, oh, like maybe two and a half years ago, sometime, something like that, and took over a tough situation. You know, money is the thing that can make you go down in a school and with PTA. And Susan stepped in and took over a pretty delicate situation. And I can't even imagine the hours that she put into making sure that everything was taken care of, above board, just perfect. We passed our audit that year, it was a beautiful thing. But literally every time there is anything going on at Teasley, it doesn't matter if it's during the day, after school, Susan is there. And often it's just the very quiet way that she supports in the background and really will do anything. So I can't tell you how much we appreciate all you do for Teasley, all you do to support all of our students, not just your precious two that are in the back, but we love you and appreciate you so much.
That's gotta be a good one, it's a type.
Thank you.
Campbell Middle School. Jonathan Tanner, let's give him a big hand.
Appreciate that. It's tailored, you know. So call up my recipients, please, Ms. Logan's coming up. So we're going to start with our student recipient. And actually, the teacher who nominated her is standing right behind her. So not to make it uncomfortable or anything, but I'm about to read your nomination for Courtney. So it says, "The Smyrna Mayor's Awards honor students for academic success, leadership, and service to the community. This year, I would like to nominate eighth grader Courtney Wade Bright of Campbell Middle School for this award. Courtney has consistently excelled in the classroom over her more than two years at Campbell Middle School, achieving a 4.0 GPA during her time here. Furthermore, her willingness to take charge of a task while helping others in the classroom demonstrates her leadership qualities. In addition to her outstanding classroom performance, Courtney is also a leader at her school, at our school, as the president of the Campbell Middle School chapter of National Junior Honor Society. She also works with robotics club. Outside the school, Courtney participates in various service projects in the community and has even been awarded the Girl Scouts Bronze Award, the highest award a Girl Scout junior can achieve. Through her devotion to scholarship, leadership, and service, I believe that Courtney Wade Bright is the very, is very deserving recipient of the Smyrna Mayor's Education Award. And recently, our drama club put on a performance where Courtney had a lead role in our anti-bullying play, and she also revealed that she has a talent for performance, which I suspect her parents already knew, but she revealed that to the rest of us as well. So congratulations, Courtney, and well done." Now Mr. Aiken, if you can come up. So in addition to standing head and shoulders above everybody else, Mr. Aiken has a lot of great qualities that I wanted to represent and recognize him for. He is certainly a role model for others to follow. In addition to the very dedicated classroom teacher, where he inspires students to excel in math on a daily basis, math that subject that not everybody loves, he has a way of engaging students in that. He serves as the math subject lead and as the data team facilitator for the school. He is an effective leader because he leads by example. He never fails to roll up his sleeves and the hard work that he asks of others, he's always willing to do himself. Last year, as our math department experienced a 30% growth in math scores on the milestones and end of grades assessment, Mr. Aiken was a big part of that because he led his department and through the support of the data team process, helped to create that growth. In addition to his focus on academics, he sponsors numerous clubs. He assists me in sponsoring the student council. He sponsors the National Junior Honor Society, the math team, and assists with other clubs, such as our soccer club. Now you would think that would be enough to earn this recognition, but in addition, perhaps his greatest accomplishment is something that he's doing outside on his own time because he is a member of the Army Reserves and spends his summers doing something a little more important than the rest of us are probably doing during the summer. So we appreciate him for that. He is truly a role model and a tremendous asset to Campbell Middle School. And finally, our volunteer award goes to Ms. Nima Logan. Ms. Logan has served our school in many different capacity over the last three years. She has served in the official capacity as a member of the school council and as our foundation president. Through her hard work, she has helped to organize schools and community events and to establish and spearhead fundraisers that directly support the goals established by our foundation. She, along with the rest of the foundation board members, has made a huge impact in supporting our teachers by offering $200 teacher grants to directly affect classroom instruction and by supporting our school goals through fundraising efforts, which most recently raised money to help convert our media center into a true learning commons. In addition to her work on the council and foundation, above all else, Ms. Logan is a true supporter of our school and a voice in the community of positivity and appreciation for our mission at Campbell Middle. And finally, while this award is coming from CMS, it is really from the community as a whole because of all the work that she does in all of the schools, because I know she works a lot at Teasley, she has a student at Sutton, so she's really active. It's not just our school that she has a major impact on, but I just want to thank you for being the voice for Campbell Middle School in such a positive way.
Griffin Middle.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Council. My group is coming up. It is my privilege to recognize these young ladies and young men for their contributions to Griffin Middle School. We are trying to develop the voices of Griffin Middle School, whether it be our students, our teachers, or our parents and community, so that theme you're going to see go all the way through here. Our student recognition tonight, Ms. Caldwell, Maya Caldwell. I am proud of her for everything she has done in my two years at Griffin. The one thing that stands out to me is every time I see her, she smiles and says hello to Mr. Gillihan. But let's talk about what the teachers have said about her. Every one of the teachers, when I sent out for nominations, every one of her teachers sent her name in. That speaks volumes. They talk about how she goes and teaches her peers and volunteers and how she is a student assistant teacher, if you want to say, in the classroom. How even though she's already doing well in math, she comes in for that little extra something. She is a leader in our school and a voice for our student body, and she will be successful one day, no doubt. And I will look back and be proud to have known her. So we are proud of you and congratulations. I'm gonna go in reverse order, I'm gonna put this one over to the side for a minute. When it comes to volunteers, we are all blessed here in Smyrna to have wonderful volunteers, and it is a hard decision when you're trying to pick one out. And tonight, I came up with two. This husband-and-wife dynamic duo over here, the Stocktons. I have been blessed with, for the two years, with them at my side. And I see more of Marie than I do Wade, but Wade contributes by, when we have duty-free lunch for teachers, and if you're a teacher and you know what that is, it's very important. Wade organizes that for me. He makes sure that all the other parents are there and going around the cafeteria. Haunted House, which is not even PTSA, it's our foundation, they were both there, helping us out and everything. Now Marie, this is my voice of my parents. When I want to know what's going on and everything, Marie comes and we have talks, and we talk about things. And things get changed a lot of times. She is at my principal's, coffee with the principal, she's on our local school council, she's on the PTSA, she's in the school store almost every morning, she does the book fair. She did Hearing and Vision, I conned her into that one last year. I don't think she did it this year, but she did it one really good year. But these two are so into our school, and they are a voice of our parents, and I really appreciate their voice and what they've done for Griffin, the Stocktons. All right, my teacher. I don't know where to begin. We talk about voice and we talk about, you know, listening to your teachers. And this summer, I had a teacher who left suddenly for the corporate world, and so I called my English department chair, Ms. Dani Crump, and I said, "Dani, what are we gonna do?" And she said, "Mr. Gillihan, if you need me to, I'll go teach AC classes." Now, you have to know that this lady right here takes any student that's in her classroom and takes them from point A, not to point B or point C, but all the way to Z. She moves those children. And she is dedicated, passionate, and everything about education. I love her dearly. She does Relay for Life, she does everything there is at our school, and I depend on her as a leader in our school, and she is our voice of our teacher, Ms. Dani.
Only got 12 more schools to recognize. Covenant Christian School. Dr. Robert Barber's the head master. Are you new? He looks new.
Mayor and Council, let me, I guess, begin by introducing myself. I am new to Smyrna. I feel like I'm new to the country of Georgia. I come from Philadelphia, where this kind of thing is pretty much unheard of. You're to be commended to value and support families in their effort to shape the future by educating their children, and to include non-public schools is an important part of that. Thank you very much, sir, and all of you, thank you. I'm still getting to know the folks at Covenant Christian, so when we were asked to get recommendations, I want both Sidney and Mrs. Campbell to know that it wasn't my decision, but it was the whole school community who singled them out. I'll start with Sidney, come on over here, Sidney. Sidney's been at the school for quite some time now, and you have to understand in a school that values making disciples of Jesus Christ as much as it does educating students and preparing them to be leaders tomorrow, every student has a high standard to measure up to. But there are always those who rise to the top and become examples to others in the classroom. Sidney's been an excellent student, and then beyond that, she's demonstrated that she has a compassionate heart. Other students in the classroom that have been through some tough times this year have found a friend and a defender and someone who will leave the crowd and come over and invest in them, in Sidney. And Sidney, that is not just to be recognized here tonight, but that's also being a great imitation of Jesus Christ, and we want to recognize you for that tonight. Thank you. Mrs. Campbell, do you have a minute? That's what Mrs. Campbell says to me when she's got something she needs to tell me that's going on amongst the faculty, families, those kinds of things. She's very sensitive to the fact that I am new in my position, and what's really wonderful is I honestly believe she wants me to succeed. As valuable as she is to us, it's rare that an administrator feels that people would say, "I believe God brought you here, so as you succeed, we succeed," and then they're willing to invest in me. And for, in my mind, that's what makes you, Mrs. Campbell, stand apart. You love your students, you're obviously dedicated to their success, you go beyond the academics with them and caring for them and invest in them. She's a tremendous communicator and supporter of parents, and beyond all that, you support your peers immensely, and you've been in great encouragement to me. So I want to say thank you for being our Teacher of the Year, if you will, in this place. We have one more person we want to acknowledge, and that's our Volunteer of the Year. She wasn't able to be here tonight because she's volunteering with her church tonight. But just to give you an example, Kelly Russell Tuddy. Our little school, 212 students, we set a record of sorts last year in preparing 900 Operation Christmas Child gifts to go overseas. And so we took a challenge this year to see if we could do better than that. Mrs. Russell Tuddy sort of took that over. She dressed up in a Christmas box and all kinds of things like that and enabled us this year as a little school to send over 1,200 boxes to Operation Christmas Child around the world. Second, she's added one thing each quarter that's a service project that is so important. If our job really is shaping the future by making servant leaders, and we need to give our children opportunities to serve, and so each, the four quarters out of the year, she's come up with one special service project for each one, and that's Kelly Russell Tuddy, our Volunteer of the Year. Thank you.
Where's that camera at? It's a new thing we're doing. We gotta be, almost out of film, surely. She must've got a 36.
It's a card.
You're kidding. They have Walgreens getting them developed tomorrow. International Academy, Kears Rock, it's back, I never even saw it. Just got one more after this, and I promise you this, next time, I'm gonna let Whitfield go first next time. If somebody will remind me. Come on, y'all. You ain't got nothing to do with Whitfield.
Yes, sir. Good evening. As our recipients are coming forward, thank you, Mayor Bacon, for including the International Academy of Smyrna. We're so proud to participate in this event every semester. Normally, I don't bring cheat sheet, but there's so much to say about our student recipient. I didn't want to risk leaving the words out. Danielle Attacobi is an eighth-grade student at IAS. She joined us as a fourth grader and has been soaring ever since she arrived. She's a junior beta member and serves leadership in junior beta. This year, she is our student council president. She's on the IAS news team, she participates in community service and is a library volunteer. But I'd like to share with you, most importantly, what her teachers have had to say about her because I think that resonates her true character. She is one of the most outgoing and enthusiastic students that I have taught in all my 20 years of experience. Danielle is always willing to be a risk-taker and try something new and challenging. Her motivation is truly beyond measure. She not only holds herself to the highest of moral and academic... She not only holds herself to the highest of moral and academic standards, but her classmates as well, and those of you who know middle school students know that that's a feat in of itself. Danielle has a personality that will brighten any room. Another teacher shared, I've seen her mature into such a beautiful, well-rounded young woman. She exudes confidence, grace, and class. Her work ethic is unparalleled, and her drive and passion for learning and helping others is evident daily. Her smile and gentle good morning brighten up my day. I'm so grateful that I have had the privilege to educate her for the past two years. At our middle school, the teachers at seventh grade also teach the students in eighth grade, so they have a looping opportunity for two years back to back. As educators, we make an impact on our students' lives, but in this case, Danielle has made an impact on mine. She is everything a young woman should be, and I could not be more proud. Our employee recognized this evening is Ms. Toni Lewis. Got to get into the camera shot. As our before and after-school program director, she joined the IAS family just two years ago. In that time, she's taken our existing program and raised not only participation, but the standards of excellence surrounding each aspect of the program. Each activity offered is student-centered and focuses not only on academic support, but the well-being and growth of our students as well. She's brought in yoga, newspaper, reading club, lots of different things that are piquing the students' interest, and we're just so excited to have her, her passion behind driving that program. She demonstrates compassion and understanding while not compromising her expectations of the staff and the program operations. She's a natural leader, she's funnier than anyone I've ever known, and I'm proud to call Bianca Isom is our volunteer being recognized this time. She serves currently as the Vice President of Programming on the Executive Board for PTA. And when I say of programming, it's everything under that category. Whether she's in charge of it or not, she's there to ensure the success. As with, change and transition can be difficult, and we've experienced a change in PTA Executive Board leadership this year. They've been at IAS for seven years, and she is determined not to let anything fall. So where there was maybe a gap in leadership in a particular program, as the VP of Programming, she took it on and made sure that it happened. From morning carpool to assisting in our cafeteria at times, from the distribution of PTA materials to the collection of fundraising revenue to overseeing whole initiatives that were left without leadership, all with a smile and unrelenting enthusiasm. And just kind of a funny, there are times when we found her in the PTA closet, which is actually a small office space, but it's basically to store all the matters and belongings of PTA, with her computer doing her day job so that she didn't have to leave and she could continue to support whatever need there was that afternoon. So thank you to her family for giving her us and allowing her the time that you so graciously give, and thank you for your bottomless energy and support of our staff and our students.
Here you come, student. Been very patiently waiting. Last time I saw you, we dedicated it.
Sounds kind of lost. That's right.
Yeah, and those are...
I got up early that morning.
They're so nice. Oh, my gosh.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us here, Mayor Bacon. We're so pleased to be a part of the city of Smyrna. In fact, at Whitfield Academy, we're celebrating a special time. This is our 20th year of existence of being in Smyrna, and so we're excited, and thank you. And, folks, we are honoring today, that you all are honoring today, represent Whitfield well and represent Smyrna well. They're also Smyrna residents, all of them. But our first recipient, Lauren Burke. We're a school that's pre-K4 through 12th grade, and Lauren has been at Whitfield ever since kindergarten, and now she's a graduating senior. And so she has experienced Whitfield at all levels. Lauren has this unique combination where she has this fierce tenacity and work ethic that plays out in academics and athletics and the arts, and then at the same time, she's got this wonderful, gentle, kind spirit, and she's loved by all, students, faculty, leaders alike, and we know that that comes from her faith in Jesus Christ, that unique combination. And so we're just so excited to be able to honor her this evening. Lauren is in academics. She has a 3.95 with a very rigorous schedule. She was just telling me how she's getting ready to prepare for her calculus semester exam and her AP US semester exam, and so a very challenging curriculum, yet she maintains a 3.95 GPA. She has distinguished herself as a servant leader among the students. She's on the honor council, she's part of what we call the SWAT team. It's the Student Whitfield Athletic Training Member Team. She's a member of the marching band ever since seventh grade, she's a member of the jazz band since 10th grade, she's going to letter for her fourth year in soccer, and has been a member of the varsity soccer team since ninth grade and is the team captain. In the future, next year, Lauren plans to attend Appalachian State where she will be a student there, but also will be a soccer player playing on the college level, and so we're very proud of her for that as well. It's, Lauren is one of those students who truly exemplifies our mission as a school. We seek to raise up young men and women who have a passion for learning, a passion for others ahead of self, and a passion for the living and act of Jesus, and she exemplifies that as well as anybody, so we're very thankful to honor her today. Next person that we'll recognize is one of our faculty members. This is Julie Bain, and Julie is completing her fifth year here at Whitfield. She's a second-grade teacher. Some of you know her because she spent 30 years in Cobb County Schools as well. And Julie has an educational specialist degree in early childhood curriculum. She's both state and nationally certified in early childhood education, has her master's degree. In addition to leading the second-grade team, she's the chair of our second through fourth grades, and over the years, Julie's helped with curriculum alignment, textbook adoption. She serves as a resource, a mentor for new teachers. She's served in the all-school, the K through 12 school instructional team, particularly in the area of technology and helping with technology integration throughout the school. Her credentials, as I read those, they're second to none, but the thing that we love most about Julie is just her passion for Christ-centered education and her passion for the children, and she loves those children each day, and they see that, and it's just a beautiful thing to watch. She's, and yet also with all of that experience, Julie is one of those people who is a lifelong learner. She's still very teachable and still learning even with all of this experience, and it's part of the reason why she's been so successful as a teacher because she's also a learner. She's a master teacher in every way, respected among her colleagues as a leader, and her picture, her classroom is a picture of what excellence looks like, and so we're thankful for Julie and to recognize her today. The third person we'd like to recognize is Dwayne Ellis. Dwayne is a parent at Whitfield. He has been for six years, has a sixth-grade student and a third-grade student. He is one of those people who, ever since his students have been enrolled, he has been volunteering in a variety of ways. Serves on various committees, co-chair and chair of Field Day. When there's an event and we need volunteers, Mr. Ellis is there. He's an assistant dean, den leader for our third-grade Cub Scouts. He's faithfully served Whitfield Academy as a volunteer, so much so that we're starting to see him more and more even as a substitute teacher sometimes. He's also a community coach for our fifth and sixth-grade football team. He has served on the Whitfield Academy Diversity Committee and helps with our Black History Month programs. Whenever needed, Dwayne has given sacrificially of his time and resources to help serve the Whitfield community. On a side note, Dwayne also has very high standards for himself and for our students, even to this degree. One time, he was substitute teaching in PE, and it was a day where we had chapel, and for chapel, the students are required to wear their tie and their shirt, and he was substitute for PE, and he had his PE clothes on, and we're fine if our teachers, our PE teachers, go to chapel in their PE clothes, but that wasn't acceptable to him. He decided that he would still dress in the shirt and tie, and so he was very happy to change, and it's just an example of the kind of standard he holds for himself and the students and part of our community. So we're so thankful for him. He gives freely of his time and expertise to assist our school. He and his wife, Anisha, Anisha's a Smyrna pediatrician, they both are just ideal parent partners for our school. One of our principals, when asked how to describe Dwayne, she said that he's a gentle giant in word and deed who serves our community selflessly and enthusiastically. Our school is better for having him support us as a parent volunteer, and we're so thankful to honor him today. Thank you, Dwayne.
Susan Thayer, if you come down while we're doing this.
Are you serious?
Yeah. I'm just going to ask Susan Thayer to give the closing benediction, but she's our school board chairman. She represents Smyrna. Everybody have a great holiday and thank everybody for what you do for the schools. Now you can say the last one.
Thank you. I want to thank the mayor and city council for providing these awards. It's very special for us, but I also want to thank Christie Elman. I don't know whether y'all know it or not, but I think we could do away with the mayor and the city council. Yeah, you'd never know the difference, but really, thank you, Christie. Yeah, we really do appreciate it, but no, we really do appreciate this. We all know that our community can be no better than our schools, and our schools can be no better than our community. So it does take a very close working relationship, and we all succeed together. So we appreciate everything, the support that we get from our city, and we hope that we give you a good school system in return. But we've recognized teachers and students and all that, but those are tremendously important, but the people we've not recognized here today are the principals, and the principals in Smyrna make the difference in our schools. We have the best, absolutely. There's not a bad one in the lot, so that really does make a huge difference. Thank you all so much for everything that you do and give to our schools and to all of our students. We really do appreciate that. So thank you all, thank you for being here. We appreciate that, and thank you for, Mayor and City Council, for giving us this great city to work in. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I haven't loved the way it's been. So...
I haven't loved the way it's been.
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 I haven't loved the way it's been.